Okay, welcome everybody and thanks for your patience. We're going to reconvene into our work session, June 9th Board of Education Work Session. And we will start immediately with a public forum. So I have first a Jason Wright and I think he is, oh, there he is. Please step to the podium and say your name and your address and you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jason Wright, 1139 Badger Street, Green Bay, Wisconsin. I'm speaking here today on Rick Crossan's behalf because the things that I've experienced as a parent in Green Bay, I've been a resident here for 27 years. I'm the Executive Director of Brothers Helping Brothers that deal with men's mental health. And I've had the liberty of meeting with Rick. And the things that we've been accomplishing in the community when it comes to men's mental health, he's been a pillar of that. He's been an inspiration for me. He's been a mentor for me. And having the conversation with him about the representation of African Americans in our community, it really touched me because standing on the front line, I myself been standing on the front line of that for probably every bit of the 27 years I've been here. And the things that we've come up with ideas with partnering with the public school system is amazing. And I myself has been hard on the front line for systemic change in our community. As been a resident here, has been taking everything you can throw at an individual when it comes to being not part of the norm. And Rick helped me feel part of the norm. Other individuals here, Vicki, helped me feel part of the norm. And having that alliance with the public school system, it only tends to grow what we attempted to do with men's mental health. The mental health that's dealing with, not only with the children in our school system, but the teachers, I speak about this a lot. My passion goes out to the teachers, not taking nothing from no one else. Rick sees the same type of focus. I've have six graduates graduated through the public school system. So the system itself is not bad. It needs to be revised. And it's with his structure and his leadership and I'm here, one voice, one sound for the representation of the African American community. And we're ready. We're ready to see that change. We're ready to love on everyone. We're ready to grab arms and go at this thing head on and find out what the problem is and why we're not at the certain reading proficiency. I myself and Brothers Helping Brothers have committed to this up and coming school year to help with that, the reading proficiency. We have over 100 guys that's actually dealing with their mental health and getting their mental health up intact and is willing to give it back to the community. And Rick helped me with that. It's been very inspiring to have someone like that in the community to be able to represent you because of his accolades. We share the same passion, yet our accolades are a little bit different. You know, he's a highly decorated in one's eyes, in man's eyes. Spiritually, we're twin brothers when we sit on the front line of this systemic change. And that's what I honor the most about him. There's no, there's no color barrier when it comes to him. The thing that we have accomplished in Brothers Helping Brothers and what leads to our great community is how we broke down the racial barrier. And the thing that we did that is by not acknowledging it. It's something that's been instilled in us for quite some time that we need to get past. Because there's so much good in everybody and Rick helped me bring that out. And we're doing that. I have a meeting that's going on today that once I leave from here, I'm gonna go right to that meeting. And it's a mixed pot of a lot of different brothers from all walks of life. But yet they are brothers and Rick is one of them. So I'll speak on his behalf in a number of ways in hopes that the board can take into consideration in having him in that position. He's a great man, great leader of our community. We love working with him. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Next is Nancy Welch. Get as close to the microphone as possible.
Is it okay if I do that?
Better.
Okay, all right. My name is Nancy Welch and I reside at 1697 Twin Lake Circle, Green Bay. As a former school board member, I am honored to speak with you tonight. I know firsthand the weight of the responsibility, Harry. Our students' families and the Green Bay school staff and our community are counting on you to stay focused on what matters the most: education. Every decision should reflect our shared commitment to academic excellence, equity, and the opportunity for every child. This is why a strong, independent school board is so essential. Board members should absolutely support the success of our district, but that does not mean aligning uncritically with the administration. The most effective boards ask tough questions, seek clarity, and serve as a check and balance to ensure that decisions are made in the best interest of students and the community, not just for convenience or tradition. Now with an open seat to fill for the next nine months, you have a real opportunity. Not just to fill a vacancy, but to bring in someone who can immediately contribute, ask thoughtful questions, and get to work. That person is Rick Crossan. Rick is experienced, knowledgeable, and most importantly, independent. He is someone who respects the district's work, but will not hesitate to do his work, homework, speak his mind, and advocate for what's right, even when it's not easy or popular. Finally, let's not forget one of the most powerful voices we have: our teachers. They are the experts in the classroom and their insight should drive our policies, priorities, and progress. When we center teacher voice, we build stronger schools and better outcomes for our students. Thank you for your time, your service, and your continued focus on building a school system we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Melanie. Sister Melanie Mcketz, I'm gonna butcher your last name. I apologize.
My name is Sister Melanie Matzka. I live at 1807 Hardwoods Court in Deep Pier. And even though I'm not a Green Bay resident and I don't have children, I have lived and worked in the Green Bay community for the past, well, since 1976. And I've worked with the Latino community and I know a lot of the concerns that exist with the families. I too am here in support of Rick Crossan. Over the past two years, I've been very impressed. I have come to know him in a variety of settings. There's, let's see. He's come to Casa Aba, the Hispanic Resource Center, to get to know the Latino community, to hear their concerns, to learn about their contributions. He came to the event Food with Friends, which is sponsored by Migration Advocacy. And it was at that time in conversation with him that I learned about his visits to the schools, getting acquainted with the teachers, with the administration, being very supportive, very interested in the future and the growth and the benefits of the children. Also, I volunteer not only with Casa Aba, but also with Achieve Brown County. And I know that Rick is a board member of Achieve Brown County and also a very vital member of one of the steering committee for Reading for the Future. And that is a committee that's really looking to work with the schools, work with all systems to be able to improve opportunities for children. Rick is committed. He's passionate. He's been involved. He listens within the community. And one final thought that I have is, my guess would be that you probably hear from some DEI nervous people about color. And to me, my concern is that I have worked with Latinos for the past 35 years. I've learned a lot. I've grown a lot. I have wonderful friends. But I cannot represent and I will now choose to represent their voice. There are enough professionals within the community to speak for their children and their families. And I think it's really important that we as a community have people who speak and know what the needs are of the children of their families. The... What to me, for all these years that I've been here, I've seen the community change. 60% of the student body is, are children of color. And I think that it's really important that as a community, our school board, our city council, our county board should reflect our community, should hear the voice of different members of the community. And I know that Rick is someone who would do that because he speaks for and is interested in all people. So I really thank you for the opportunity to be able to present my experience of him and I would hope that you would consider him for the open position. Thank you.
Thank you, Sister Melanie. We have one more, Julie Olman.
I didn't mean to do that, but since I did, I guess I'll just have the mic. My name is Julie Olman. I live at 1428 Street. I have been an educator in the Green Bay Area Public School District for 27 years. I love my current position as a library media specialist at West High School, my alma mater. For the past 17 years, I worked as a high school library media specialist where I have organized school community events, including a mock election where 467 students voted and an African American author read-a-thon where 85 readers read 74 different works. I could not have accomplished those community events without a full-time library media assistant. Recently, the library media assistants received an email stating that, quote, "Over the next two years, the district will be addressing our declining enrollment and corresponding budget reality in various ways. One of those approaches involves adjusting the staffing model for those in your role so that each of you serve .5 assignments at two schools," end quote. As someone who pays attention to the news and reads emails, I am aware of the district's projected 10 to 12 million budget deficit for the 2025-26 school year. Therefore, I understand the proposal to cut full-time positions. However, in order to support our students and help our staff, library media specialists need a full-time library media assistant at the secondary level, as is the current model. In addition to daily tasks like library attendance, loaner Chromebooks, and help desk tickets, library assistants help with diverse duties. Here is a list. Prepare the library for the school year, processing books and student Chromebooks. Set up and work registration days, including days and evenings. Distribute Chromebooks for the freshman class and new students. Welcome new students with information and password setup. Distribute textbooks for students and teachers. Troubleshoot student Chromebook issues. Assist staff members with laptop issues. Submit TRA tickets for damaged Chromebooks. Record library attendance. Create Destiny Library Reports. Assist study hall students and implement LMC expectations. Recommend and check out library books to students and teachers. Look up and make interlibrary loan requests for students from other schools. Work with main office secretaries with removal or addition of library fees on IC accounts. Place book titles on Title Wave to assist the library media specialists with the book order. Process new books to get them ready for circulation. Follow the district weeded books procedure. Assist with processing files confirming that library materials are turned in and all fines are accounted for checking multiple programs, including Destiny, Hays IMM, and Hays Asset Manager. Locking missing devices. Assist with processing early graduates confirming that library materials are turned in and all fines are accounted for. Assist with end of the year inventory. Check out and help students use hotspots. Troubleshoot printers. Assist with keeping the library clean. Create library displays. Assist with senior check-ins at the end of the school year. Assist with closing up the library at the end of the school year, storing textbooks and supplies. Assess fines for unreturned materials. Staff checked in and returned materials, I'm sorry, shelf checked in and returned materials. Contact students that have overdue materials. Run the LMC when the library media specialist is not available. This is not a comprehensive list and it might differ at other schools. In addition to the tasks listed, the library media assistant is a partner in the Library Media Center, one who understands the importance of creating a community space where all students are welcomed, encouraged to ask for help. Without a full-time library media assistant, library media specialists will not only lack the data that assistants help us track, we will also miss opportunities to collaborate with teachers to plan lessons and prepare students for discerning information in a digital world. Library media assistants are a critical component to every successful library program. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. So this is the last call. I don't have any more requests to speak. All right. We'll go ahead and progress. I'm gonna pass the role of Chair to Alex Mano to walk us through education.
Thank you. For the education portion, we have our selection of providers for after-school programming. I'm gonna read the background. Okay, thank you. Yes, I'd like to invite Amy Fisher up to give us some information on this. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. I just wanted to provide a very brief update in regards to the after-school programming between this year and next school year. The district operates 1121 CCLC after-school program sites. The district operates two. Then we have the Boys and Girls Club that operates, I'm sorry. The Boys and Girls Club operates two sites. The district operates three sites and the YMCA operates six sites. We are not foreseeing or proposing any changes between the current operations and next school year's operations. And I'm just wondering if there are any questions with the memo that's been proposed.
Ready?
Amy, on the document, it shows Kennedy did not have after-school programming this year. That's a typo, right?
Yes, sorry. Yes, I'm sorry about that. Yes, that is a typo. Kennedy did have an after-school program this year and will continue to have an after-school program next year.
Right. Is there any discussion, questions?
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you, Amy.
Okay, so I'll pass the chair to Laura to lead us through operations.
Thank you. I believe we're going to be joined at the table by Mike. So just to kind of tee this up, in our last meeting, the board did request that staff look into maybe some other options with regard to the IPP. So you've all seen the memo and have had a time to look at it, but I'll over to Mike and see if there's anything that he would like to add to that.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here. My name is Mike Fries. I work in human resources. And we appreciate the chance to be back here to speak about this topic tonight. We're bringing forward an updated proposal for your consideration. As Laura alluded to, back in May, we did have a proposal for an optional employee-funded short-term disability program based on the questions and feedback that were provided from the board earlier this spring. We're here tonight with a recommendation that would keep the income protection program as it is currently administered, but requesting that the board consider one of two revised percentages for income replacement. And so in the memo, we ask that you move forward a recommendation to change the income replacement percentage to either 60% or 70%. All other features of the program remain in place. And again, as Laura alluded to, there is that brief memo that we provided. So I'll stop there and see if there are any questions or anything I can possibly assist with. Thank you.
Anybody want to get questions? Go ahead.
How would someone like me who's never worked in HR and doesn't understand finances terribly well know which one of these is the better choice?
I think from a purely financial standpoint, on behalf of the school district, the better choice would be 60%. An employee would prefer, someone who needs the program would prefer the higher percentage because that's the income replacement piece. The two options reflect two very standard percentages that are standard in industry. And so really, it comes down to the appetite that the school board would have for aligning more with maybe what overall industries offer, whether it's a short-term disability or a different type of income replacement model. But financially, a 60% is better for the district's finances. 70% or above would be better for the individual who is seeking to replace their income.
Andrew.
Yeah, could you clarify what the term "new enrollees" for IPP starting July 1st, 2025 means?
Yes, thank you for that question. The intention was to clarify that if somebody who is currently an employee will be receiving IPP benefits because of an event, they would be able to complete that event under the 82.5%. New enrollee does not pertain to new employees of the district, but rather anyone who would need the income protection plan as a result of an event that qualifies. So someone who newly needs to access the income protection plan after July 1st, if it's approved at 60 or 70, that would be the rate that would be applied.
Okay, I have a follow-up. It's not, if that's the, if that's the correct, you know, technical term, then I'm okay with it. But usually people, I mean, people generally think of enrollee, a new enrollee, meaning that I am new to a program and enrolling in it, right? So you're talking about everybody would be under the modified percentage if we modify it. Is that, are you officially speaking only enrolled into IPP if you're drawing it?
I should have selected a different word. Enrollee, you're correct. That's not an accurate word. I'm struggling. I shouldn't even call it a synonym. It'd be a replacement word for that. Anyone who needs to utilize IPP July 1 forward would be eligible for income replacement at the approved percent at that time.
It could just be all eligible employees would receive the new. I don't know, I don't know how I'm going to vote on it, but it's certainly much improved over the changes that were proposed previously. I think it's important to always keep in mind that regardless of what other industries are doing or even other places in education, we have, what we have in front of us is a product of give-and-take negotiations where staff repeatedly chose benefits over money for generations. And now, just because in, just because in 2011, districts, all districts in the state were given this ill-gotten good set of tools, that doesn't mean that it's good to, good to do that. That being said, it's much, it's much better here than it was before. I think having everyone on it, it is important that people have IPP, so thank you.
Any other questions, Jeanette?
I'd agree with you, Andrew. It is better. It shows compassion and that the board understands and the district understands the needs of the employee. When they go to an optional short-term disability, many people don't take that option. And then when they need it, they're out of luck. And there, it was very difficult to find other schools that offer short-term disability. Even the one that Mike said offered short-term disability does not offer it completely. And most short-term disability plans go 40 to 70%. That's even when the employee is paying the premium. And so I think this shows that we're being compassionate and trying to compromise. So thank you for doing the work on this, Mike, and look forward to voting for it in a couple of weeks.
Anybody else? All right. Vicki, did you have anything you wanted to add?
We will bring forward a motion then at the regular board meeting with a blank area for the board to, for a board member to bring forward a recommendation of either the 60% or 70%, and that'll be in two weeks.
This was just to kind of get the temperature of the board, to see kind of where we are. And I thank you for the memo. That was very helpful. And all right, I think we're good. Thanks.
Thank you. I think I'm supposed to stay for the next item, perhaps. That's why I'm not getting up, sorry.
All right. Yes, we're moving on to job description updates. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. The, a multi-department effort, multi-organization effort has been at work over the past few years, seeking ways to support our newly hired paraprofessionals. We have paraprofessionals across the district in pretty much every school. We have building paraprofessionals, special education paraprofessionals, educational interpreters, bilingual English second language paraprofessionals, career education paraprofessionals, four-year-old kindergarten paraprofessionals, Head Start paraprofessionals, paraprofessionals who are kind of do a utility amount of work where they get deployed to any number of those positions over the course of a week. And as a result, we feel that it's very important that they receive support for getting acclimated to the school district when they get hired. getting acclimated to the school district when they get hired, sustained onboarding, professional learning. They are very important support staff and professionals in our school district. And so the Green Bay Education Association, Brent Bergstrom in particular, spent a number of years seeking funding to support some mentoring and some support programs for our paraprofessionals. Amy Fish, who was up here earlier, joined the effort to seek additional funding. And over the course of this past school year, we've had the opportunity to provide all of our newly hired paraprofessionals an opportunity to be assigned a mentor and to be supported in sustained onboarding and professional learning throughout the course of the year. You may recall that in one of the superintendent's updates, one month she did highlight some of the work that they've done together. We've had a lot of timely topics based on the professional standards that the National Education Association outlines for paraprofessionals. And we really spent a lot of time together, working together, partnering to determine what would the next steps be. Thankfully, through the, the leadership and partnership, again with the GBEA and with Amy through the United Way, additional funding has been secured to extend and enhance dollars to support the programming. And so tonight, we're providing an opportunity for the board to consider a newly created grant funded limited term position entitled Paraprofessional Development and Effectiveness Coordinator. This would be an individual we would, if approved for, we would spend the summer looking internally, most likely from our current ranks of paraprofessionals to step out of their typical role and instead be really embedded in the work coordinating and managing, leading, facilitating the professional learning and sustained onboarding for our newly hired paraprofessionals. We currently have nineteen opportunities for paraprofessionals to be hired in our school district to start the school year. So we know we're going to have a good, good crop again of new hires. We have three hundred and some paraprofessionals across the district. So it is a, a very important employee group that we hope that this position will be approved for, for us to take the next steps.
Thank you. My understanding is our retention with paraprofessionals has improved.
Yes, Amy and Brent, of course, when you get grant money, it's, it's based on, you know, again, theories of action and proof of concept that you are expected to demonstrate through the data that you've made, made progress and growth. And we're pleased to report that, yes, this year, in, in the efforts that we had, we did improve retention of our newly hired paraprofessionals. And we've, we've just had a real, it's been a really fantastic experience from my perspective. I've really enjoyed getting to know our mentors, getting to know the paraprofessionals and partnering with my colleagues to learn about like, hey, how, how can this work? But yes, retention is improving in the paraprofessional employee group as well.
That's great. Thank you. Anybody? Alex?
Do we have anybody in our current, anybody that's kind of doing the work in some way or some parts of this work that this position is meant to be from a leadership perspective? You know, you mentioned hiring possibly somebody within the district already, which I tend to be in favor of a lot of times in situations like this. But just thinking about the amount of vacancies and new people left to onboard and the limited time that we might have this position, I'm just curious if we have, you know, or what are also maybe the outside prospects of finding somebody who maybe already is in a position like this that has the expertise as well?
I appreciate that question. Yes, you know, there is the saying, you know, many, many hands make light, light work. A lot of us are going to continue to be part of the core team that does provide support around this. But the idea that someone could, could really have this as their main focus and really go from where we are to where we'd like to be is what's most attractive to us. There is not somebody who currently has this as their full time gig. Danielle Dirksen in Human Resources does a lot on the, kind of the operational side of things and the day to day covering of positions and working with folks. But she's not the professional developer for the team. She does a fantastic job with what she can do, but it's only part of her work, right? And we have a number of paraprofessionals that I think are looking for leadership opportunities to grow as professionals as well. But you're right, there, there's a lot of talented people in our community as well that, that if we went external would be, you know, would have a lot of credentials to be considered. We think that we do have a lot of talent internally that be considered this. But I appreciate the, the question, of course.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Mike. All right, we're going to move on referendum updates. And that will be Kim.
Good evening. I do want to start before I run through the quick presentation, just a quick shout out and thank you for those that aren't aware, the last day of school and the first day, the following week are very busy times in construction and remodeling and all the things our teams are doing. But across the board, from teachers to building staff to facilities, it's a very chaotic few days as we get rolling into the summer. So just a thank you and really appreciate, we have a lot of moving parts this summer and it's, it's been going very well. Others might say, I have a different word for that out at the building level right now, but it is overall going very well. So thank you to everyone who's participating in that. So I will start, I think I hit too many times. Thank you. All right. So I'll start here with one of our, I'll say our last kind of pre-construction twenty-two referendum updates. We have all of our twenty-two referendum construction projects, other than one in the construction phase. We, our last remaining bid is our expansion to our distribution center at ASB. That opens the nineteenth of this month, and then we will go right into construction with that project. But as you can see here, there's quite a few remaining projects in that twenty-two referendum that are currently in the construction phase. I will update the team as we get further along, making sure those are tracking in a little more detail to completion in future updates. But as of right now, all these projects have kicked off and we're beginning construction. Any questions on the twenty-two referendum projects?
I just want to point out the fact that the, it took a while, but those speed safety signs are finally going to be finished this summer. I know there was supply chain issues and all kinds of things, but they're them now quite regularly around the city. And they're, they're giving our, not just our kids, but our, our citizens an additional layer of safety. I mean, I stopped at one, well, actually, I was behind a car that stopped at one, which is nice. Sometimes that doesn't always happen when there's a flashing light and cars still sometimes squeak through there. But I feel like with time, those are going to be, just add more and more for, especially for our students who, who walk to school and their families. So just wanted to note that.
I would second that. And on another note, I'm not sure if you have this kind of information, Cal, but can, so just for example, I was at Washington for a number of years and we had pretty extensive roof work done. Is what's being done different or is it already needing to be redone from only roughly ten years ago?
So depending on the roof type, it's likely not impacting the roofs that were completed when you were there. So they're sectioned off, each of our buildings has roof sections. And rather than replacing a whole roof, which you really couldn't afford in a capital year and likely don't put under a full roof replacement and referendum unless it's really needed, we'll do those in sections. So you can kind of phase in sections of roof. So those are likely other, certainly other sections. I know specifically which ones were done off the top of my head. But likely, if it was within the last decade, it's likely not a replacement of something that was installed. Currently, we're using a roof type that would have a twenty to thirty year lifespan.
Anybody else have any other? Jeanette?
I'm just wondering what ASB represents. I have no clue.
That's our distribution center at twelve ten Guns Road. So our kitchen is there. A lot of our storage vehicles are there, our main distribution hub for the entire district.
Anybody else? Okay, go ahead. Oh, Andrew, sorry.
Is the West grandstand still scheduled to be completely finished on July fourth?
Yep, we have weekly updates on Friday. Our last update was obviously last, last Friday. They are tracking completion before July fourth. Everything is going as planned.
Thank you.
Any others? I know, I just move, go ahead and move on. I just, just looking at this, I was just about this.
And then I have two slides to update you on the twenty-four referendum. So as you see here, with the phase one projects, our last project is opening this month and, and I believe two weeks. Sorry, I didn't put the exact date on here, but that'd be Chapel Elementary Expansion. So that would complete our phase one bidding. Construction is going to be, we've recently awarded DODI, which you'll see on the next slide. Construction will be starting there in the coming days. And obviously, the new West Side Elementary and Washington have already started. Project design, I'll update, maybe on the next meeting, I can update the overall phasing plan to share with the board of where we have now landed with our phase one completion dates and then the additional phases to the overall referendum scope. So I'll give a full overall update for the projects that haven't even started yet, just to give you an update on where we're sitting with that projection. But we have started design discussions with Beaumont and Lincoln for phase two. And then, since our last update, we have opened the bids for DODI Elementary Expansion. Another successful bid went really well. That was included twenty-seven work scopes. That is the addition remodeling and the site work of DODI Elementary for that consolidation. As you can see here, we had over ninety bids received, so great bid coverage. And we did award alternates that included generator upgrade, solar, and then flooring, which will be a longer term solution for that flooring, hopefully for the life of that building. Then with, I just had it in there. But any questions on the twenty-four referendum? Updates.
Love your updates, Kale. They're always a highlight. Thank you very much. Oh, go ahead.
I just want to say, Kale, that you are doing a fantastic job with two referenda and, and selling and leasing properties and everything. And we sometimes might forget that you also have to keep the district operating also. So thank you for your good work.
And I'll always say that it's always the people, the, the other people other than the one that's sitting here. So thank for everyone. Again, it's a very busy time of year. A lot of people are contributing right now. And it's, it's just great, great to see. So thank you.
All right, that would complete operations and I will get, send it back to James.
Thank you, Laura. I'll pass the chair to Andrew for policy and governance.
Okay, thank you. We will begin with revisions and repeal of Board of Education policies and rules in the three hundred series related to teaching and learning. Do you have some highlights, Melissa?
Good evening. I have Eric Khan with me today, who worked on policy three forty-one point twenty-one supervised work experience and the rule. We are requesting that the language of the rule be repealed and folded into the policy and that the policy be updated to reflect our current practices and procedures with respect to our supervised work experience.
Any board member questions on any of these? Okay, I'm moving, moving ahead. We have revisions to Board of Education Policy four thirty-one student attendance, and I would assume questions might overlap with the associated rule on that as well.
Before we get there, we do have policy three forty-three point eleven student programming and schedule changes at the secondary, secondary level in the three hundred series.
Of course, I thought perhaps no one just had any question. I'll go ahead.
So we, again, working with Eric's team as well as our directors of education or school leadership, we worked on updating this policy as well to reflect changes in how students may change their schedule at the secondary level.
Questions on this? I have, I have one. Is it, is it easier, harder, or the same to withdraw from a course now than it was with whatever existed before? Or did nothing district wide exist before, or it was just the oral tradition history? I'm presuming maybe, maybe it didn't say on a district wide level because it's all in here as new language. And you would have had, you would have had to have had strike through language if you couldn't do it unless, it was just the policy, not the rule. So it, it, it seems reasonable and it seems to probably reflect what the normal process is, which is, you know, get it in writing and your guidance counselor signs off on it and the, the principal doesn't disagree. So, okay. Then we'll go ahead to B and C with the student attendance policy and then some related procedures.
I am joined by Chris, who is in our Student Services Department, who worked on this policy and rule along with Katie Sulzer in the same department. Very high highlights and really I want to give credit to Christina and Katie and their team because this was a lot of work to update this policy with, with the number of legal requirements with respect to student attendance. But then to reflect the philosophy of the school district regarding student attendance. The language, I think, had a little bit of an overtone of punitive and not collaborative. And under Christina and Katie's leadership, we have really worked to partner with our families and to try and get to root causes of student attendance and absences and work to address the root causes rather than penalize families. So they work to reflect that philosophy in the policy.
Board member questions? James?
Thank you. So I'm looking at the, I think this is the policy, and I am looking at the attendance procedures for virtual learning. And I just have a kind of a practical question. So the scope of virtual learning, I recognize that KJ Academy has a particular way and I can understand attendance. But then we have credit recovery programs, what have you, that I think fall under virtual learning opportunities. And practically, what occurs today when it comes to recording attendance?
How do we take attendance at KJ?
No, not at KJ. I recognize KG has very high touch classroom environments where taking attendance, I can understand. It's the other virtual learning opportunities that I don't understand how we take attendance or would enforce attendance in those environments.
Yeah, the other environments that we've had, attendance Yeah, the other environments that we've had, um, attendance is taken based on student engagement with the asynchronous or online coursework that is, um, required.
So it's, it's just through engagement, activity and logs?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Other board member questions?
Can I just add to that for a moment? I did consult with Eric on completing that, just to make sure that we did capture all various ways that our students learn, and so that we have consistent attendance practices, and that language was intentionally left a little bit to the discretion.
Right.
Because there, there's so many situations that may, that may present, and we wanted to make sure that we, it was, um, the students were present, or they were, we, um, we had homework completion, but there was some evidence that they could use to take attendance, for attendance purposes.
Right. The reason why I asked the question is, it seems so contrary to the rest of the structure of the policy, right? Where we're counting days, and we're, and we're, you know, trying to meet statutory requirements, and then there's virtual learning, right? And I just didn't understand how it kind of fit. Thank you.
Alex?
I have one question, and forgive me if I don't do a good job with this, because I was trying to read through a lot of policy yesterday, and I was trying to find the exact spot, so correct me if I'm wrong. But did I read at the secondary level that if a student arrives tardy to class within one minute after the final bell had rang, then it is not to be considered tardy? Did I read that correctly? And I, if you could clarify what the rationale was behind that?
That is correct, and that was the previous definition, definition of tardy. And we did have quite extensive conversations around tardies as well, and what that definition looks like. And, um, what we now will have in our schools is we'll have actually, where students will be able to, um, use their IDs, and we'll be able to calculate the, the actual presence, the minutes present, and we'll start to be able to calculate that in IC. But for attendance-taking purposes, it's either, right now, it's either tardy or absent.
Okay, um, other questions? Um, I have a couple, um, for, uh, let's see, I think this is the policy. Let me double check. For, yep, the, so policy, and then, um, part two definitions, paragraph C, unexcused absence truancy. So if a student is absent without an excuse from the parent guardian, okay, yep, that's obvious. That's an unexcused absence. Setting that aside, now I should say or. Or if the student leaves school or a class without permission of the teacher or the administrator in charge, it's unexcused. So, um, can this be interpreted as a student leaving early under an excuse by the parent, someone could still say, claim that this would count as unexcused? Or even truancy?
I can see your point there. That wasn't the intent of how that definition was written, but I can see your point.
That's why we do it. I mean, that's why we have the discussion round first. So it's probably just, uh, just an or, or an and, uh, switch or something. There, um, okay, and then, I guess, the other, the other thing that's a concern, and I, I know, I know we might be forced to have some of these words from, from the state, but it still bothers me, so I'm gonna say something about it. A student is a habitual truant if absent from school without an acceptable excuse for all or part of five or more days in a semester. I just wanna get that word out there, because I, I think what it, I think it really did a disservice to situations where there's a real attendance problem with a student missing multiple days, where we should be putting resources into, hey, why is this kid, why is this kid missed fifteen, eighteen, twenty-two days this semester? Because what it does is it puts a label on someone who doesn't like first and second hour, and skips them once in, once in September, twice in October, twice in November. They're now a habitual truant, the same as the person who with no explanation didn't show up for the entire months of September and October. And it's, it's, and actually, actually, do we, do we have to have that? I mean, I know the state would say that it is, but do we have to dignify that by including it? Are we, are we required to restate the state's rule into our policy? Or could we just say that for our, yes, we will do what the state says, but we're not going to label it the same here?
So we don't get to have a different definition, you're correct. Uh, for purposes of being transparent to our parents, and when we send out our policy, I, I think it's better to have in the policy what we're required by the state, so that families understand what we're being obligate, obligated to comply with.
Okay, that's fair. If you dropped it, if you, if you didn't list it to make a point, then, yeah, what, what the heck, my kid just doesn't like blank class and skipped five times. At least now it's, okay, that's, that's fair.
Um, And then just back to the point that I made at the beginning, Andrew, really, yes, that's what the state law says. But again, Christina's team has worked so hard at finding the root causes to the barriers for students attending that first or second hour, and working with students to figure out, how do we get you into class versus sending out the letters and putting a label on students?
Sure, but I mean, there, there might not even really be a, a barrier if someone likes to sleep in a few time, you know, a few times. Well, I guess a few times is okay, but five is, it's not okay. But it's, five is not, uh, but four, four is. So, um, I, I would hope that, um, you know, we're not, I, I'm sure we're addressing resources accordingly, and, you know, especially if someone's, your grades are fine, and they're the, um, five-time skipper. Is there, um, is there any kind of situation where parent could be, is there any pathway where a parent could be excusing the absences, and it would still be habitual truant? And what would that pathway be?
So there's a distinction between habitual truancy and chronic absenteeism. So habitual truant is that definition you're referencing there is all or part of five days, whereas chronic absenteeism is, um, below ninety percent attendance rate. So those could be excused or unexcused.
Okay, what about the, um, what about the ten day, what about the ten school days rule that the, the parent can ju, can, uh, essentially, we don't encourage it, but the parent can excuse just because? How does that discretionary, you say discretionary absences? So, like, how does that, how does that work if you have, um, you know, you talk about family vacations and travel and stuff. Well, what if the, what if the family travel plans, you know, hopefully they're not doing it every year, but include eleven days? How, how does that play out? What does that get recorded as?
Yeah, so it gets complicated. So, um, and as we were reading the policy, actually, vacation is considered separately. So then, um, for your ten, for your ten days, now after ten days, it's saying that you can no longer excuse your child, but there's also a thirty-day provision where you can excuse your child. So let's say that there is a chronic medical condition, and we're actively partnering with the parent around that. We will continue to excuse the child. If there's a psychological condition, we get the medical documentation for thirty days. It may extend to sixty days. It may extend to ninety days, because we wouldn't ever want to, um, not continue to partner with our parents in those extenuating circumstances. The, the same is true for even if those situations aren't present, and they exceed those ten days. We wanna continue to have our parents call in and let us know, um, the rationale for why their, while their child is not, is not going to be in attendance at school, so that we can make sure that we are trying to address the barriers to their attendance. And we can't do that without our parents, so they're so critical. So we wanna make sure that we're not creating divisions, but that we're truly partnering.
Um, okay, so it looks like, so what I, what I'm reading here is healthcare of thirty days, and you're, and you're saying the note is for thirty days, and it could be renewed, and there's probably situations where it gets renewed, but you do it every thirty days. I, I don't see anything about, I don't see anything different about the, I'm not finding the different thing about vacation if it was, and again, I'm not saying it to encourage people to take these very long vacations, but sometimes, sometimes, especially with international families, it needs to be a long period of visit, because you don't know when the next one might happen. So is there something, I, I just, I'm not seeing it here. But, but more importantly than that, are you saying that something different doesn't have to happen on paper with the eleventh parent-directed day? Or is it still going to be entered different into the computer? Could, and that could be, because that could be important to, that could be important to people. There could be legal conditions. There could be custody conditions involved with, with that, and the deciding factor might be how is it put in the computer?
Yes, so it can be put in the computer as absent unexcused after it exceeds that ten days.
Can or would be?
It would be, uh, if those two situations were not applicable that I just described. So if they do not have an ongoing medical or psychological condition, that would follow within to that thirty-day parameter. And we do have that information in our ten-day letter that we send to families, and we also have that information in a number of places to let them know.
Okay, so are you saying that the, the family who's gonna be taking a twenty-day trip to see some family overseas, that they will be marked as ten days of unexcused absences? So, I'll, I'll pause there for now, and I'll maybe ask some questions offline, but I think th- this could, maybe I'm thinking of escalated situations in my head that are worse than they are, which is why I'll take it offline. But I think there could be some really bad things that would happen, as could escalate unintended consequences of that. But I'll, I will, uh, I will stop there. Any other, um, board member questions? Okay, on the policy or rule for four thirty-one? Okay. Uh, thank you. Then we have adoptions, followed by some revisions and repeals. This would be in the eight hundred, um, eight hundred series of policies.
So just for the, the viewing audience, um, we have adopted a policy review schedule where we're to review two chapters of our policy series, um, every year. So this year is the eight hundred and nine hundred series. The nine hundred series is one policy, and, um, we've already reviewed that and determined that it didn't need any changes. So we are bringing forward the eight hundred series policies for your review. Uh, tonight, we have a few that, um, still need to come, but for, by and large, I really wanna thank all the staff that worked on getting these done and getting these to you to review. These are, this is our community, uh, series of policies. So all of those policies that we work with, um, our stakeholders and our parents and the community. So they're, they're important policies, um, to bring forward. So we have a few tonight. Um, I, I had asked the board to review the policies ahead of time, given that we have so many tonight. And so we were going to, I'm going to them off, ask you if you have any questions. If you don't have any questions, then we can continue. Again, for the viewing audience, all of these are uploaded into Board Docs. You can see the red lines, um, for the policies that are revised, and for those policies that are new, you'll be able to see the new drafts of the policies. You want me just to go in order then, Andrew?
Um, yeah, why don't you go ahead, and then I'll, I'll call on people if there's questions.
So with respect to the policies that we're bringing forward to, for adoption, the first policy is eight twenty-one, use of students in public information programs.
Uh, go ahead.
My one question after reading this over is, where does, um, parent approval come in here? I didn't see anything that, would say that parents would be approved, approving their child, um, participating in this program.
At, at the beginning of the year, we provide our parents with opt-outs as to whether they can, um, participate in, um, not only our directory data, but also, um, participating in media and other social, uh, the, these types of, um, events. So that, that would be considered first, and then if they're allowed, this would be the rules that govern if you're allowed to participate.
Other, other board questions? Um, I do have one. What is the, what is the meaning of to be, uh, for? Students shall not, students shall not solicit or promote district issues without approval of the superintendent of schools and learning or designee? What, I don't know what solicit or promote district issues would, would be.
Um, think of an initiative, or, um, for example, a, a new reading curriculum, or, um, uh, an, another initiative in the district, other than referendum, because that's treated entirely separate. And so students, um, wouldn't be soliciting or promoting those issues without, or, or for example, um, fundraising for a new stadium. Uh, we wouldn't send kids out to fundraise for a new stadium without the approval of the superintendent or the designee.
Um, okay, so solicit means fundraising, or?
Solicit would mean, um, asking for support, asking for funds, soliciting individuals in, in the community.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't think, uh, certainly, we shouldn't be asking students to, to go do it. But this looks to me like it's a policy that has the unintended consequences. Students can't do their own activism about things.
I, I see what you're saying, so we need to add, the district shall not direct, yep.
Any other, uh, any other board member questions here? Okay, next one, Melissa?
Next is policy, uh, that's new, is it policy eight twenty-one point two, news releases.
Anyone? Okay, I'll go ahead.
Our next new policy is policy eight twenty-two, news media relations.
Board members? Okay, thank you. Uh, next one?
The next new policy is policy eight forty-two, uh, memorials and tributes.
Uh, board, board questions? Um, sure, got quite a bit in here, but, uh, well, well explained.
And the final new policy is policy eight eighty-six, district and First Nations communication and collaboration.
Uh, board member questions? Okay, uh, looks like that's it for the adoptions, and then we have the, um, revisions. Um, yeah, we should probably just go through each one again. I mean, well, I mean, I think the, by going through them all, I mean, we, we went through all of them, but there were two-thirds of them were no questions.
Okay, here we go. Uh, policy eight eleven, community involvement and engagement, revisions to that policy. Okay, here we go. Uh, policy eight eleven, community involvement and engagement, revisions to that policy.
Can you just give me just, uh, just a fifty words or less on what, what changes in everyday life here as part of this and if it's, if it's nothing but it's worded better, that answer is acceptable.
That's the answer. Thanks to Ingrid and her team for working on this.
Okay, anything else on that? Okay, let's just keep going.
Policy eight twelve, uh, parent involvement. Again, thank you to, um, Ms. Ingrid and her team for working on improving the language in this policy.
Board member questions? Okay, thank you. Um, eight twenty-one, five?
I'm gonna do eight twenty-one point five policy and the two rules that we're bringing for revision. Um, this policy was updated by Lori Blakesley and Amy Jacob to reflect, um, just standard changes to the, the policy and rule.
Okay, um, board member, board member questions across, um, eight twenty-one point five, this is, so there's a policy and there's
Three.
Two, there's three, there's a policy and there's three rules.
And we only have changes to rule one and two.
Some cases, the, and several, several cases, these are changes of, of one or two words. Is there, is there any actual change for any of the groups, uh, anything that's now banned or unbanned?
No substantive changes.
Thank you. Last call, board questions, social media policies? Okay, um, go ahead, Melissa.
Right, policy eight thirty and rule eight thirty regarding public use of school facilities. Um, th- these were last updated, uh, almost ten years ago and, um, Kale and Luanne and Amy Fish worked together to update this to be more clear with what our expectations are of our community partners, as well as provide clear guidelines with what's respect, what, what is requested and required when community is renting our facilities.
Any, uh, questions? Uh, yes, Lynn?
So, uh, does this include, um, eight thirty rule facility use rules? Okay, if, um, I told you I wouldn't, I can't nitpick about all the editing because I don't have time, but I will say that if we go to section C, five, um, well, no, it's not five now, I guess it's two, no, it's five, five.
Five.
Um, prohibited substances, I think that you accidentally took out the word no and it now says there shall be use of tobacco, nicotine, non-medical vapor products or alternative smoking products. That'll be an easy one.
And, Andrew?
Oh, Dan.
Yeah, in either, I can't find it now, but in either the policy or the rule, you know, the intention was to say you can't, oh, we could vacate the building, um, and I think there's the word vacation, uh, instead of vacate, um, so if you just wanna, um, do a search for that word, appreciate it.
All right, anything, anything else? Okay, uh, next one?
Next is policy and rule eight thirty-one, use of tobacco, nicotine or alternative smoking products. Um, largely the changes are to update to capture those additional smoking products.
All right, any, um, any questions there?
And we're, and we're gonna repeal the rule and fold that language into the policy.
All right, then, uh, go ahead, the next one?
Policy eight thirty-five point two, accessibility of technology-based resources. Um, again, just some minor updates, updating names and, and titles and those sorts of things.
All right, any, uh, any questions there? Okay.
Policy and rule eight forty, uh, public gifts to the schools, uh, revisions to, um, reflect changes in, um, in positions as well as updating our process with those public gifts to schools.
James?
And Melissa, um, I would like the district to, um, consider establishing a threshold over which, um, the board would have to approve the inflow or the gift. Um, it also extends to sponsorships in the event that someone wants to sponsor and their value is, and I would suggest the threshold being the same as, um, the threshold for expenditures over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, I just feel like the district acting without board guidance on those sums of money, um, is not in line with our vision.
We can bring that back.
I guess, I, I, I'd like a little more information about what the, what the intent is with the, the, the crowdfunding, um, what, like, what is, okay, acting on behalf of the district, okay, that's, that one's obvious. Or for the benefit of any district school or district program. Does that, does that have anything to do with the, the things where sometimes teachers have various help, helping each other out sites or that, that's, it's not that, it's not, it's not, um, throwing something out there, my classroom could use something, it's, it's just district or, or school. So you can't crowdfund for the school and the principal, never heard of it?
You also can't crowdfund for your classroom and the principal doesn't approve it. So for example, um, asking for specific technology that we can't support or is not compatible. Um, asking for, um, structural, things that would be structural changes in your classroom that facilities would not um, i- implement, uh, back when crowdfunding first started and it's like the GoFundMe and those sorts of things. There were things where teachers would ask, uh, with no bad intent, but not recognizing that the district couldn't support it or there would be an end of the life or, you know, put up this in my classroom, but then I move classrooms and I want that to move with me, um, even though it was a donation to the school. And so it's just providing that clarity that before you put those things online, you need to get the principal's approval.
Okay, uh, um, but also, it also, it also doesn't restrict, uh, it could just be, I, you know, I don't like that site or I'm, hopefully it wouldn't happen very often, but again, we, you know, policy is not to, not to write the ceiling, it's to write the floor. Uh, we've had, you know, we have, um, we have not had one hundred percent outstanding principals all of my twenty-five years doing this. Um, we have had, uh, the, them all grade at the same time sometimes, but not, not for twenty-five years consecutively, so I just have to watch for that, um. I'm not gonna, I, I'm noting it, I'm not worried about it, I'm not suggesting an amendment. Okay, and anything else on the public gifts or including the rule? Okay, we'll keep going forward, uh, Melissa?
Um, eight forty-one, sponsorship and advertising involving the schools. I'm gonna guess, James, you would like to see a similar change there.
Yes, C two, so B says that the superintendent of school shall seek board approval if there's some uncertainty. Um, I would just like you to establish a concrete threshold as well.
Okay.
Yes.
So could you give me an example of what would be covered under this? Before I ask my next question, because maybe the example will take care of that.
Um, I, I'll try and give you an example. I hope it's relevant to what you're asking. Um, for example, um, if you go into any of our gyms, um, you can see the doors are covered from Bellin with branding of the schools and then it might say Bellin on there as a sponsor. Um, uh, the programs that are sold or that have, are issued at our activities and our plays and they, those are sometimes sponsored by sponsorships included in, in those programs, a- along those lines.
So I do have another question then. So, um, and I'm not gonna use real names, so let's say it's XYZ hospital. And you have an athletic program and you need an athletic trainer. So because XYZ Hospital advertises, are you required to hire XYZ Hospital's athletic trainer? And if you don't, does the hospital then pull their advertising dollars?
That co- question is more complicated than, than you probably, um, recognize. We do an RFP for our athletic trainers. And so our athletic trainers, um, are hired through the, that program as part of our athletic training contract as an added, uh, I guess, bonus to, you know, having, uh, them uh, to select their bid, they offered those fundraising and, um, sponsorship dollars to help brand our gyms in order to ha- to have that aesthetically pleasing thing. So that came, that came hand in hand in that RFP, but it was done through the RFP process.
But the hiring of that hospital's personnel is not because they're giving the advertising. That's my question. Thank you.
Just a comment about sponsorships because, um, I used to work as a fund development manager for a, um, a different nonprofit, um, and we just always had the, um, the agreement of the sponsorship very clearly written out. So if you give us a hundred thousand dollars, this is exactly what you will get for it. And if it doesn't say, and we will hire your blah, 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 then what, that isn't one of the, so it's just a ma- and I'm sure you do that, it's just a matter of having it on paper.
All right, um, other, other questions? So I have, I have one, um, so in the, um, district prohibits any sponsorship or advertisement that, um, generally speaking, does a whole lot of hor- horrible stuff, but, um, that are obvious, but, um, we specify certain, we specify certain movie, TV and movie ratings that are, you know, those are set by a un- unelected, undemocratic group and there's, I think lines have gotten blurred that there are things that might be legitimate that just get the, you, you could have, you know, I could imagine there being a lot of things potentially that would be movies about, um, you know, real, real history or the real world today that could be a fully legitimate thing that would be tagged with an R or, or a TVMA. I don't know how, it's probably not very common that people go try to advertise these things with district property anyways, so it's maybe more philosophical, but I think, I, I don't know that I need some other, uh, well, I certainly can't imagine the case where something that was, you know, NC seventeen could possibly be okay to advertise here. I could see, I, I could name current events going on today that just a real documentary about them would have to be R-rated territory to be legitimate. So, okay, no one else is that worried about it? I'm not that worried about it either, but I did want to point it out. Okay, anything else? Okay, next.
Next is policy eight fifty, sales and solicitations on district property. And then we, um, would repeal the advertising involving the schools, policy eight fifty-one, because that's folded into eight fifty as well as eight forty-one.
Um, board member questions? Okay. Thank you, next.
Policy eight fifty-two and rule eight fifty-two pertains to distribution of non-school materials on school grounds and through the schools.
Jeanette?
Okay, so you have that you will not permit political materials or, um, yeah, what I see here is political materials. Um, what about religious materials? Is there a a limitation to that?
Religious materials in terms of, of what?
Um, so, uh, distributing something like a certain um, religious denomination, invitation to come to Bible study school or maybe, um, a material like, I don't know if you're familiar with Watchtower or something like that from Jehovah's Witnesses or something for a particular religion that would be promoting their religion and, or promoting their ideology. Is that allowed? Think political material, but put, um, a religious bend to it. Is that allowed?
If you look at, um, section, I'm on the policy and if I look at section two, I believe it's two A, three, um, and this is the section of the requirements, the community program activity and the material promoting the program activity does not discriminate on the basis of sex, age, race, religion, in- including religion. As long as, and also it wouldn't be interfering with the school's program during the day. So, um, if they're promoting that students would be, um, out of school all day at a religious program, that, that would be permitted, but we can't viewpoint dis- discriminate on the basis of religion. So for example, the church down the street is having a carnival and everybody's invited, they're not discriminating, discriminating based on a student's
Okay, so you're talking about an activity like promoting the school carnival or promoting the, the school, the, not school, but the religious carnival, the religious, um, class. I'm talking about more, do you allow distribution that has ideology on it?
Well, it has to be related to our students. So the content of the, the content of the materials have to be related to a program or a benefit for our students. So if it's simply come to our church on Sunday and, um, that's, that's not essentially related to a program for our students.
And maybe I can help, maybe not, but I'm kinda curious to the answer to what I think she's getting at, which is we can't, you know, be promoting material that's promoting anyone, but, you know, particular political, you know, person or whatever. You know, so we can't, or can we, or to what extent can anybody also promote something that is, you know, in favor of any one political person or thing, or, you know, separate from saying anything or discriminating against any one particular thing, if that makes sense?
Good point. So the, the language is that we can't, um, distribute political campaign li- literature or an endorsement of a political cause, activity or candidate or position. So for uh, you know, two candidates get, or two elected officials get together and they sponsor a kid carnival, we would be able to promote that. Or there's, uh, an event we would be able to promote that. Or there's an event on water quality sponsored by sponsored by an elected official and it's geared towards students. We'd be able to send home materials related to that.
That's not my concern. My concern is that there would be literature that could be distributed under this policy regarding ideology, not regarding like, okay, come to our weekend event, regardless of what you call it, to learn more about the the big blue blob that we worship. I mean, is that acceptable? Because that, that's a line that's, it's not just come to our carnival to have fun. It's come to our carnival to learn about our ideology. Is that allowed?
I think that pushes the line and we would have to take that under consideration and review that. But again, we can't be viewpoint discriminatory. So if it simply is come to our carnival and it's sponsored by, you know, whatever religious organization, that has to be permitted.
But so correct me if I'm wrong. So, you know, we can't distribute political campaign literature or material that creates an endorsement of a political cause, activity, candidate, position. So we can't say come to this party's rally or this candidate's event, whatever, but can, are we able to, or can anybody say, hey, come to this religion's event or this, you know, this religious person's thing? There's nothing in here that talks about that in the same vein, right? Are we missing that piece?
So if I go to the rule and I I look at what the language is in the rule in in concert with the language that's in the distribution policy. Again, it has to be geared towards our students and programs for our students and activities for our students. So we're, and it talks about how we're a limited public forum. So we're not open to everyone bringing their materials and saying, for example, we're having a woodworking class, you know, in Howard for adults this weekend. Please send this home through your your Tuesday notes. We, that's not related and that would be something that we would not send home. So I hesitate to give an answer because I don't know what the learning about the big blue blob and what what else that would entail and what else would be off that program because there, there is a very gray line as to what is acceptable and what's not. And we look at every piece of material on an individual basis.
I just want to say I hear you, but you know, without having something in here, I guess, maybe at all, for the religious aspect, I feel like then the way I maybe incorrectly, the way I hear what you say, I think we open ourselves up to then the possibility of being viewed as discriminatory if we're saying, or we don't have something that says, well, we can distribute material for this one particular religion or whatever religious affiliated thing that's being promoted or piece of material being distributed, but then not the other.
And we can't, we can't say that we're not going to distribute for religious organizations. We take every piece that comes in. So if it meets the guidelines, regard, it just simply has to meet the guidelines. It doesn't matter who's giving it to us. It has to meet the guidelines.
Yet if you would find that something had, okay, it's a carnival for our kids to come and enjoy, but it had some type of ideology. You're saying that could not be?
We can't say we're not going to distribute something about a carnival because we disagree with that ideology.
Other other questions? I have, I have one kind of broader one. Who who does this apply to? The the district doing stuff, district employees doing stuff? Does it extend down to students?
This, this applies to outside groups, so non-district materials.
Right, so there's there's not non-district materials. And when we will give them out or not give them out?
Yes, if a local organization, a bank, for example, they're again, they're having a kitty carnival. That's the easiest one that I can think of. And they want us to distribute the fact that the flyer for their kitty carnival, they follow our procedure. They have check all the boxes of what needs to be on there. And then we could distribute that through our Tuesday notes.
Okay, formal distribution of outside groups stuff by district personnel acting officially.
Yes.
Not a student inviting their whole class to a church, not student speech. Okay, thank you. All right, then there was the there was the rule and the and the policy there. Okay, next.
But next is policy 853, district endorsements.
Questions? I'm checking to see if I have one. Okay, so you can, you can say, you can say I'm, I'm a teacher and you should all vote for this guy because he's better for education. You just can't stretch it to a look like a district endorsement. That's what are you doing? Okay. How do you know if it is or if it isn't? So we know if it's not just someone didn't like who they went and endorsed, so they're going to try to go for this policy and say, well, I think that one went too far to be like, what, what makes it be not acting on behalf of the district?
I think that we evaluate each case on its own. And so if it's a, you know, an administrator saying, I'm the principal of XYZ Elementary and puts out a letter, has the the letterhead has the school logo, the district logo.
For sure, letterhead, we're, we're done. Like, that's not okay, but this is my job. This is how I've been doing it, where I've been doing it is relevant, and this policy is terrible, then then where are we at?
You guys are testing me on First Amendment all night, which I enjoy. I, the, there's significant case law on when you cross the line between speaking as an employee and speaking as a member of the public. And so there's a number of factors that get looked at. Coming to the board table and talking about a matter that, you know, I'm here as an individual. I'm not here on behalf of my employer. I'm not here in my capacity as a teacher. I'm here speaking as an individual, as a parent here in the district. That wouldn't cross that line.
Okay, if there's, if it's laid out in in case law, that's good enough for me. Okay, anything else on district endorsements? Other board member questions? Okay, next up?
Next is visitors to the school, policy and rule 860. Chris Coller, Amy Fish reviewed this and provided updates to the this policy and rule.
Board member questions? Okay. Next.
Policy and rule 871 regarding public complaints about instructional and library materials. Largely just updates to titles of positions.
Board member questions?
Policy and rule 892.1 relating to student teaching and internships. Not too many significant updates to those as well. It was primarily related to updates in like our TB tests, which are no longer tests and changes to positions, names of positions.
The the TB test has finally changed?
Yeah, you don't have to do the test. You just have to submit a form that certifies you don't, you don't fall in the risk categories. And if you don't fall in those risk categories, then you don't have to take the test. If you do, then you got to take the test.
Anything else on the, on that one? Okay, so that had rule and policy. Okay, the next.
Finally, 893, policy and rule relations with educational researchers. And this was last updated in 2022, so just a few updates to language, minor changes, nothing substantive.
Any board member questions?
I do have a question, but it does pertain to one of the policies that we went over earlier that I did not catch in my review over the weekend. And I was hoping to just quickly backtrack and ask a question about one of the other ones.
Do we have any, first, we have any on 893? Okay, then Alex, go ahead.
It is in regards to 822, the new policy proposal with the news media relations. It's going to the parts of implementation with district staff and news media where it references in part two, all staff intending to release information to the media or speak to the media regarding the district and their capacity as a district employee must first notify the school and community relations department. What is or was the thought process behind that? And is that, you know, even something that we can prohibit?
So this is solely speaking in the capacity as an employee. So again, this goes back to, I'm not speaking as an individual. I'm not speaking as a member of the public or a parent. I'm speaking in my capacity as an employee. And yes, employers are able to regulate that so that you are not incorrectly speaking about district information or providing student information that should be provided to the news media along those sorts of lines.
And that is all fair and totally understood, but my concern when I read this to me, you know, keeping in mind some of the situations we've been in in the district over the last 10 to 15 years, there have been, there have been moments where I think the community has been thankful that, you know, teachers have spoken out and people have spoken out on stuff. And this would seem to limit that or put them in a position of immense risk for their job or or possible repercussions for doing something that isn't necessarily something they shouldn't be doing.
So we have policies on whistleblower protections that allow employees to come forward with their concerns through the channels of bringing forward their concerns. We have First Amendment protections for employees as well. This is strictly dealing with in the scope of your employment before you're going to speak to the media, work with Lori's department and and talk to Lori about what that's going to look like.
Whistleblower protection written into board policy. Yeah, I think that's what Mr. Minow is getting at. So thank you for reminding us of that.
I guess I would add to that by saying the, you know, this will, this will never probably get, this policy will probably never be mentioned when someone is on the wrong side of the rule, technically going and talking about how great everything is, but no one's ever going to probably notice. So it's going to happen because someone, the policy, someone's going to point to this policy because they're upset at it or or because they're, you know, just, right, no, no one's going to do it because they like it. So there's, I could see, I could easily see a case where two things that probably were below the line, one of them makes someone angrier in a position of power and it gets tagged and the other one doesn't, or vice versa. So I don't know how you, I don't know how you fix that, but I would hope that we would always be erring on the side of of the speech. I think certainly you can't use the letterhead without approval. You can't say, you know, as the principal of blank school. But I, I understand that you could, we don't want people intentionally muddying the waters either, but saying I didn't use the word as. So, okay. Anything else or did anyone else maybe miss something in these that you want to go back to? Otherwise, otherwise we have the just the repeal recovered because they were rolled in or above. Okay. Thank you very much. That that concludes policies. I will yield the chair back to James.
Thank you, Andrew. And with that, we've reached the end of the work session agenda, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? All right. So having adjourned the work session, we're going to commence with the special board meeting of June 9th. The, I'll, before I start, it's 7:30. Board members, do you need a five minute break before we start? Because this could be, yeah, thank you. We'll, we'll start in about five minutes. Thank you. Okay, let's, let's get started. We're gonna convene the special board meeting of June ninth. And I know it's been a long evening so far. So, Kenzie, can we do roll call, please?
Becker.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Lyerly.
Here.
Burlak.
Here.
Minow.
Here.
Canelo.
Here.
Great. Thank you very much. Everyone is in attendance. We're gonna go directly into action items, employment of staff. Will someone please read the motion?
Move that the employment of staff is presented.
I move that the employment of staff is presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion? Kenzie?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. I'm gonna pause just a second and invite Jamie Crewold to the the table. We just voted on a new director of literacy. Welcome to the like to say a few words, five, ten-minute speech, you know.
Not that long. Thank you very much. I am honored to be selected as your next director of literacy for the Green Bay area public school district. I am really looking forward to continuing the work in grades K through three with structured literacy around Act twenty and also the adoption and the implementation of their HMH resource throughout the elementary schools. And in addition, I'm also looking forward to working with our secondary schools around disciplinary literacy and the work that's being done in the districts and learning how I can lead and support all of that work. So again, thank you. I am truly honored and I cannot wait to start in the position starting July one.
Laura.
I just wanted to say that I took part in the hiring for this position. And you made such a great impression. You have such an interesting background. You're in your journey on your way to, you know, this position with us. And I just really look forward to seeing all that you bring to the table on behalf of our kids.
Thank you for that. I really appreciate it. I feel like my journey has led me here and there's a reason why I was chosen. So again, thank you very much.
Others? Well, welcome.
Thank you.
And thanks for waiting it out. This has been a long.
Yes.
It's okay. It got me used to how things work around here. So I appreciate that, too. Thank you.
All right. We're gonna move on to the resignation of staff. Can someone please read the motion? And Alex?
I motion that the resignation of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Kenzie?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Let's move to retirement of staff. Please, someone read the motion.
I move that the retirement of staff is.
Second.
Discussion? Kenzie?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Move to termination of staff. Will someone please read the motion?
I move that the termination of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion? Kenzie?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Let's move to revisions of policy four four three point five. Will someone please read the motion?
I motion that the revisions of policy four four three point five, student use of wireless communication devices as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion? Andrew?
Thank you. I appreciate the the improvement in the policy. I think there's just a lot of things that could go very wrong if we were getting into the business of holding devices after after the end of the school day. And at the same time, I fully understand that there might be a consequence for those who can't handle having it on and off during the day that they might be checking it in with with the office until the end of the school day. I I would presume that would be obvious that if a student was excused early for some reason, that that's the end of their school day and we don't have to write that in. I guess I did. I did want to talk about, I do have some thoughts about study halls, and I thought maybe we'd have more time to talk about that, but we don't. So I guess my thought on my thought on study hall is that study hall is designed to be a pretty flexible time. And I, it seems like a lot of battles might be fought over study hall where we might have a reasonable amount of smoothness in getting everyone on board with it for the, you know, for setting them aside in the classroom. I guess I'd just like to get some discussion on that.
Sure.
Cindy?
Yeah, thanks, Andrew. So the policy would allow for use of cell phones in study hall because it is, if a teacher permits the cellphone to be used. I did reach out to our four comprehensive principals of our comprehensive high schools and asked their take on cell phones in study hall. And they would prefer the policy stays as is, that they would not be allowed. However, we do understand that the board determines what the policy is and they would follow what the policy is based on what the purpose of a study hall is and how we would prefer study halls are used. Having just the ability to use your cellphone doesn't allow for the discretion for a teacher to say you may. And it, in this, with the policy the way it is, it would allow the adults to help guide students in some of the decisions that they might be making in that environment.
Okay, can you can you show me tell me in the in the policy, so that would be that would be a teacher, a teacher granted exception by the teacher who's in charge of the study hall? Is that what that would be?
That's how I would see it, that a teacher would be able to give permission for students to use and a cellphone during the study hall.
We have, then we're gonna have a situation where some teachers, some teachers may for for good and valid reasons, think that it's bad to have cell phones and the answer is always gonna be no. And then we're gonna have teachers who acknowledge that probably, and I asked some people who were in our schools fairly recently, and it seems to be quite similar to when I was a long time ago. It's a, I mean, it's I don't know that it was ever really sit down, shut up and study. So, but does that mean if I know my way around and I'm, I was, I think I was usually on the in the library, probably playing chess, actually, but that was okay because I was getting my work done. I didn't, right? So to say that study hall, study hall, I think is a it's a, we, it's a flexible time. We allow kids to to schedule during the day and I don't want to see them have great differences in what can happen. I also think I just don't see where the win is in a, in saying that we're not gonna have it during study halls, if it sounds like from talking to students that have experienced it, that they might be at least kind of sort of accepting of classroom check-in for actual classrooms, right? Where we're having interaction and study halls generally, study hall is not an interactive time, although if you were doing an interactive thing during study hall, yes, you shouldn't have your phone out while you're doing the inter, if I'm going to see, if I'm going to see my math teacher for extra tutoring, I wouldn't have my, I'd probably have my phone off. But my, I don't want to see kids who might have one or maybe even two study halls if they're on track and had a schedule to graduate. To say you can't use it because of the, I, I, yeah, I, I want to dominate the conversation, but I think I think it's a, yeah, I'll hold there.
Jeanette?
I think we have to stick to the policy. One of the problems that we're discussing this now is because there hasn't been a policy. If the policy says instructional time is inclusive of study halls, that means cell phones should not be used in study halls. I could show you research that has been done that shows that phones should not even be in schools. So I think that we're allowing phones to be used during passing times. There's many, many high schools out there that are not. And there's good research that shows that 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 probably is bordering on not being really good, but we're being flexible here. I don't think we can take the the teacher or the person who is supervising study halls and put them in a situation where they're gonna be combative with students. Not that they're gonna be combative. The teenager will probably be combative. Let's not set that up. If we're gonna say that it's part of the policy, it needs to be sticking with the policy.
Our principals would support that.
Lynn?
As a former high school teacher, I would say that if we're going to call it a study hall, we should make it a study hall. If we're going to call it free time or playtime, then we let you have free time or playtime. If students are working day and night and staying way ahead of the game and they don't have any homework to do, that certainly doesn't mean that there isn't some value in sitting quietly and reading or or studying or learning something new. And the fact that it's not interactive is a hallmark of a study hall. It is generally a time to be quiet and learn. That's a good time not to be using a wireless device.
Alex?
I just wanna first clarify something. When you were responding to Andrew, did you say that there's something still in the policy that technically would have allowed a study hall teacher to permit use in their study hall?
Well, the policy allows teachers to allow students to use their cell phones in class for instructional purposes. So, good, yep. So that's that was, that's what I was referencing.
So, yeah, so I guess clearly in that case, technically they could in study hall, but I think it goes without saying that it would have to be for a specific piece of work that was done in another class where it was allowed, which so, yeah, so prompt, that's a purposes, yes, but no. So my other question then is just to to get ultimate clarification. So to make sure I was reading it correctly, not miss anything in all the policy and stuff. Does this current policy now, as it stands, say that they're no longer allowed in class and they're no longer allowed on their person? Just want to make sure I'm reading it correctly.
So during instructional time, as instructional time is defined, except for those very limited exceptions, health, that that when students are in class, they are not allowed to have their phones on their person during class.
Thank you. And then my last question is that, and is that, does this policy also now say that at at the secondary or at each grade level, they need to be, it's the same across all high schools? Same thing for middle school and then same thing for elementary?
Yes, that is the language that was added to section three A, one and two.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was reading that correctly, not missing anything. Appreciate.
Other discussion, Andrew?
Okay, I'm going to move an amendment to strike the phrase instructional time is inclusive of study halls from two D, three.
Do you remember, we have a second? I'll second the amendment. Discussion?
All right. I've, I could be wrong, but I've I've been around for a while and I think this, I think the, there will be a lot of of battles and conflict about about study hall that will over, maybe overshadow what we're doing that maybe is really right about about class time. And I just, I think the idea of kids are doing any number of things during during study hall, right? There I have and kids go help out, kids go help out in the the band room, off with music stuff, but maybe, maybe not on this day, right? I think the students who I think the students who know all the different options, know how to self-advocate are gonna end up maybe in spaces where they could use them to I, I also, I also intentionally did not strike one word and switch it to, and say exclusive either. I just, I don't think we, I think this is a, a good start and maybe we should just shouldn't be prescriptive about study hall and focus on the, the classroom.
Can you specify or rephrase then exactly what you're saying you wanted, so I make sure I hear that right, especially with what you just said?
So just a point of order. I know that when we get into discussions, please ask for recognition through the chair just so that we can keep it going. Thank you. Andrew.
So, I'm, I don't know if it does enough, but I think it sends the right message. My, my amendment is to strike instructional time is inclusive of study halls.
Jeanette.
Well, I'm not gonna support that amendment. In my opinion, I, we heard from students and the students said, we don't need our phones in school. We're gonna put them away. I've been in high schools where they walk into the classroom, they put them in the, the pouch that looks like it should hold my shoes in the closet. And, or at the innovative high school at NWTC, they actually have them in locked pouches. The students are okay with this. They know what to expect. This makes it very arbitrary and sets up a position of, of a problem between students and teachers. And as I said, there is good research out there. And that, that shows about, phones are like a siren call. If you think about a siren, what do we all do? We all look at it. We all get distracted for that second. A kid has their phone and that's what they're thinking about. There's good research that shows that. That's what they're thinking about. When they're in study hall, they should be doing something constructive that's instructional. They're in school. They have plenty of time outside of school. They can use it in passing time. They can use it in the cafeteria. They need to have self-discipline and they shouldn't be using it in study hall. So I cannot support that amendment.
Lynn.
And I will.
Sorry. I don't know why I said that. No, Lynn, sorry.
I thought that's what you said.
No, it's not. Go ahead. I apologize.
Nobody called me.
Yes.
I don't support the amendment either. And we will have combative people only if we are not clear about what the expectations are. Let's be clear on our expectations. Study hall is for study, period. It's not for play. It's not for recreation. If you're in a study hall, you're there to study. Therefore, teachers should be expected to do not allow students to have their phones in study hall. Once we're clear about that and all the teachers support it, that'll be the end of the story.
Alex.
I encourage everyone, and this is how I try to look at most things when I make decisions, to look at all the things that we're missing out on or that we have to, in a better way to say that though, is what we have to gain, not what we're, what a student might be missing out of. And so, to put it another way, there's minimal things that students are gaining if they have access to their cellphones in study hall. It's the same things that could get any other time and it's still pretty low-level meaningless things by and large. Whereas all the other things that they're then not engaging in are much more meaningful. When we talk about experiences focusing on other things they could be learning, going to other teachers' classrooms for more band lessons, for more one-on-one time, meeting with their coaches, go over plays, you could go over a million different things that they could be spending their time on, that they would now be focused on. And all of the positive consequences of those things, from being less stressed, from being more informed, from being more prepared, to developing more social relationships and interactions. Those are the things that I think we should focus on, what we can gain with this opportunity. And just to throw one last thing in there. Oh, and actually, sorry, let me finish that thought. And then also think about the possible academic improvements that would happen, even from the most minimal to the most significant with that extra time spent on those things. And then the last thing I would add is especially at the middle school level, considering that this is kind of, you know, a whole holistic policy here, the middle school level, I definitely have zero interest in supporting because that is a whole mess with, with, with phones, especially in, in study halls are really hard to manage as the middle school level. You just have to experience it sometimes. It can be very challenging. At the high school, you can make a case for more mature kids and so on and so forth, but based on everything else that I, 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 I would not support this amendment.
Laura.
I agree with everything Alex just said. I won't be supporting this amendment.
Okay, so, can I call the question? Yeah, okay. So on the amendment to the, the policy, can we take a vote please?
Minno.
Uh, no.
Canal.
No.
Gerlach.
No.
Lyerly.
No.
Becker.
Hi.
McCoy.
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, so back to the original discussion, are we, do we have any other discussion on the actual policy? Hearing none. Kinsey.
Online voting is now open. Andrew, are you able to vote online?
My rule is I, I don't ever abstain. It's yes or no. Have to be eighty-five percent okay with something for it to be yes. It's really close. I think we're gonna be back to do something a little different about high school study halls within a year, but, okay.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Let's move to F, revision of rule four, four, three, point five. Someone please read the motion.
I move that the revisions to rule four, four, three point five, procedures for implementing student use of wireless communication devices as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Kinsey.
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, so, we're gonna have a few people leave the board table and we will get into the next session, section. Section G, selection of individuals for board vacancy interviews. Kinsey, can you bring up the presentation please? Okay, I'm gonna give a brief description of the process that we're going to use and then I'm gonna pause. We'll have an opportunity for discussion and then I would accept a motion or entertain a motion to adopt the process that we will use for selection of the interview panel. This process is called cumulative voting or AKA dot voting. So we have sixteen candidates. Each board member will be given eight votes. And they can use those votes in any way they want. So if they would like to add all eight dots to one candidate, they may do that. So the concept is to be able to identify present, preference and how much preference they have in a particular candidate. So you have a, a group of votes. So, the first vote will be without discussion. So everyone has received the materials. There's been no coordination or no direction on how to evaluate the materials. Everyone has come with their own opinions. We will go through this process. We will have Kinsey tabulate the, the results and then we will display them. And at that point, we'll go around the table and every board member will have the opportunity to advocate for a, a candidate, one candidate. Each person will get to speak and then I'll go in the opposite direction and we will do that up to three times. And the reason why I say up to three times is it is absolutely your privilege to not advocate for anybody because you, that's your preference. Or I would just, you know, refer back to board norms. If the argument or the, the advocacy has already been made, do not feel like you have to make it again, right? So if we get to a point where no one has anything else left to say, we'll cut it off and we'll vote again. So the first round of voting is intended to take us into around ten. But if less than ten candidates receive votes, we will go and we won't force ten. So if only seven candidates received any votes, the next round will be voting with seven, seven candidates. The number of votes that you get is half of the number of candidates. So at that point, if we have eight candidates left, we will each get four votes and we'll do it again. We'll present the, the results. We'll have a discussion and at that time, we'll try to identify, based on the distribution of votes. If we can get to a candidate pool of anywhere between three and seven-ish individuals that we want to interview, then we'll call the night. And we will invite those individuals to come for interviews. Any questions from board members? Everyone's had an opportunity to review the materials. If hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the policy.
Just to be, I think just to have the, the terms like the, the only, most likely, the only formal vote will be to vote on the slate of candidates, right?
I'm actually wanting to adopt this process.
Oh, adopt the process, right. And then, but
At the end.
The dots are not, in the legal sense, dots are not
Correct.
Votes, although I get, yeah.
Yeah, you, I stand corrected. At the end of this process, we will, I will entertain a motion to adopt the slate of candidates to invite to an interview.
And, and 'cause I think, yeah, it's, the dot process works, works really well. It's, it's completely public. It'll be on screen. Yeah, I'm, I'm one, my only thing I was wondering is maybe if it's a odd number, we should round, if we should round up instead of down.
So I rounded down, but I'm flexible. I, that was just the directive I put in there because I wanted to call it out, but right now it's to round down.
Thought is just that if it's, if it's two, if it's, if there's, if there's seven, it's say, where, say it filters down to seven, I think you should have more than three so you could. Or maybe just say you have, maybe just say you have five in the final round?
So, if we get down to five, I'm gonna call and, and we're gonna enter into a discussion if we need a second round. If only five, if, if only five people get votes, I think, I think we, we call it and invite them. Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to adopt the process, then?
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
All right, so let's get started. So, while we actually allocate our dots, if you would remove the presentation from the board, I actually went on page four. I went ahead and copied all the dots, so identify your color and then now you just have to move them into the, the grid that represents the candidates. Oh, I'm sorry. There is an email that everyone received, right? Yeah, if you go to Drive, you can get there as well. It's a document that shared with you. Apologize. And Kinsey, can you just verify before we get started that everyone has edit privileges because you do have to have edit privileges? I think they do. Let's fix that first. Okay, thank you. Yep. That's, so on page three, you can identify your color. So then you can just move those dots. There should be eight of them into the grid and put them in the cell that represents the person's name. Okay. Andrew.
I don't wanna be yellow though. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Thank you, Andrew. It's been a long day.
No, it is, okay, it is, it's touchy. So if I'm moving someone, I'm not doing it on purpose. I control, yeah, control X, control, control X, click control V, I think is a real good idea. Although if you don't click too close to a line and change a border.
Let me help Laura.
You're, what color?
So I, I'm thinking in the right spot, but I moved it around.
Yeah, so you, you're not.
Just, just go for blue.
Yeah.
Push down and drag. Uh, okay. Oh, James said he doesn't look on a map.
What's that?
She's using a Mac, she can't move her dots.
Yeah, so she just needs to reload because if she was on it before edit privileges.
Oops.
I'm going to take a time check because it looks like all votes have been allocated. Is everyone okay with their voting? Okay, then I'm going to call it. You can present, you can change this, the page to show it. Um, that's not right.
Refresh?
Refresh it.
It won't show the dust. It's just showing numbers.
No, it don't. It's going to show. Which, which version are you using? I mean, you're in this one. There it is. Five, four. We're going to. He's going to. We did this.
Well, it's, I mean, do we need to change it? I mean, the, it's, it's also, cause it's also relevant, I think, that maybe diff- range of support too. Are we talking about changing it to numbers or just trying to show?
Nope. So there's, there's, uh, two slides. This one just shows how individuals voted, right? That's fine. Okay. So while we, she's going to now, uh, create a ordered list.
Of both.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. So, okay. So when we look at our second pass, um, I think that if everyone's okay, that we would not include Dave or Elliot or Damian or John or Megan. And, and that, so that's one, two, three, four, five. That gets us to 11. Do we want to have a conversation about Christina and Kalen? They all, they both just received one vote. Yes, Andrew.
I guess my, my thought is we were talking about 10.
Right.
And if there's exactly 10 that got a vote or more, and that also gives us five votes to work with, I'd just as soon keep them in.
But this not 10, it's 11. That's what I'm saying.
11?
We're, we're 16 minus five.
I still think zero versus, zero versus non-zero is the clear place to do it.
Jeanette?
I would like to advocate for Kalen. Um.
Why, why, we're not, we're not advocating. We're just, yeah, let's. It will, it will. Right? So that'll, we, I want to pick the slate going forward and then everyone gets an opportunity to advocate. So if you're, you basically are siding with Andrew that if someone received the vote, you want them to go forward. I, I am, I'm not going to be arbitrary. If we want to stick with 11, we can stick with 11. Laura.
I would be willing to eliminate the, um, the people that got just one vote.
Okay.
And, and it would have to be both of the people that got one.
Exactly. Lynn?
I support that. I would eliminate the ones that got only one vote and, um, move forward with nine.
Same. I would do the same.
That would give us, uh, Andrew.
If, if we do nine, are we going to do five dots or are we going to do four?
Well, let's have that conversation next. Are we good? Cause I'm, I'm okay with either one of those.
I mean, I think it, I think it's unfortunate that maybe someone was going to advocate and it was their first time doing the process and could have made that problem not happen, but I, it sounds like there's a majority that wants to take it down to nine. So.
But the, the whole concept is, you know, looking at the real, uh, reality of the chance at that point. So, I mean, if we were talking two or three, I would have a different opinion. Um, but with one vote, I, I have a hard time saying the magnitude of change that has to occur, um, is, is significant.
I agree in the process, so I'm fine with it.
Right. Thank you. All right. So let's take it to nine. And Kenzie, if you would just, um, put up, if you've had an opportunity to fill it out. Okay. So Samantha's eight, Rick and Miranda are sevens, Aaron and Alyssa are sixes, Brant is a five, Matthew Seagert is a four, Katie and Rick, this now, if I'm saying that correctly, um, are twos. All right. So now I'll, I'll start on this side of the table. Alex, if you want to take it and make a, you know, advocate for an individual, please do. Um, and then we'll just go around the table. So you don't have to be recognized. Just when Alex is done, Jeanette, you can advocate and, um, I keep going.
So I am going to take the opportunity to talk about somebody that is new to me. When I went through all of these, I made sure to read all of these multiple times carefully. Obviously there are some names that we are familiar with. Um, but, um, Mr. Brandt Pearson, uh, someone who I'd like to advocate for, um, for a couple of different reasons. Um, one, being somebody that, um, has a diverse background of experiences, with different industries, um, education, uh, business development, et cetera, um, a lot of different life experiences. Uh, if my memory serves me correctly, um, he also has, um, children in the district, which I think is a certain value. And ultimately it, what I took from what I was able to glean from his material so far is the ability to communicate and work well and work well in capacities, you know, representing others and being a leader, um, was something that I thought, uh, would obviously, um, fill, fill a void that we need. So.
Thank you. Jeanette passes. Lynn?
I would like to advocate for Reverend Matt Seagert, also someone that I've never met and had, and didn't know about before. Um, I think that he brings a very unique, um, perspective, could bring a very unique perspective to the board in that he's a local pastor and also a parent of young children in our district. So he will be a parent of children in our district for quite a while. Um, and I thought it was also interesting that he is the son of two lifelong public school educators in Wisconsin. So he definitely has, um, all his life been interested in and heard about education. He says that, um, their example, his parents' example has shaped his own, um, vocation as a community leader and an advocate. Appreciate that he calls out, um, the value of collaborative spirit, deep community roots, values-driven approach to leadership. He says he believes in listening well, asking thoughtful questions and always prioritizing the wellbeing of students. And I'd just like to say, um, when I saw his name on the list and saw that he was the pastor of Atonement Lutheran Church, I said, oh my goodness, well, that church is right in my neighborhood and I have neighbors who I know go to that church. So I took a little survey and I went around to my neighbors and took my little dog with me and asked people if they, who their pastor is, and of course they all knew. And I said, what do you think of him? And, um, I said, you know, he's, uh, he's applied to be on the school board because it was publicly noted. And what do you think about that? And every single one of them said, you would be so lucky to have our pastor on your school board. So I would advocate for Matt Seagert.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to, uh, pass and let Andrew go.
You got three advocates?
Nope, one, and then we're going to go around.
Oh, I mean, total.
Yes, total. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, all right. So I'm going to, I'm going to advocate for Aaron Lee. Aaron Lee is a graduate of, graduate of John Dewey. He, uh, attended, attended school in Milwaukee and is back in, back in Green Bay, uh, full, full-time physically. And he's in the process of becoming an, an EMT. Uh, Aaron, during his time as a student leader at J-Dell was, was very involved in evaluating board policies. He brought a very, um, he brought a lens of, of fairness and inclusion to, to everything he looked at. He's, um, yeah, I believe his capstone project was evaluating a bunch of, a bunch of policies, um, where he identified some, some concerns of his and spent, uh, spent quite a bit of time with, with Vicki and her role at the time, working on that. Um, very, uh, very serious, very, um, very committed to, um, to inclusivity, making, making the, making sure the district is for everybody. Um, he is a, just a, a strong advocate with strong, um, is just a very good advocate for public education and he understands a lot of the uniqueness of what makes, uh, makes GBAPs including, but certainly not, certainly not limited to, to Dewey. Um, I, and I do know him from outside of this process. Uh, he was actually an interviewee previously when I was on the board as, as well. He wasn't the final selection, but, uh, absolutely it is, it would be a good, um, good value of our time to, uh, inter, at least interview Aaron. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
I'm going to take, um, this first round to advocate for Alyssa Prophet. I guess to start with, she is a mom of two students in our district, a young, young students. And I imagine will be, um, involved in our schools for quite a few years to come. But on a bigger scale, she has proven herself through her work in this community to be very, um, deeply committed to building a better community. Um, and she has done that by, obviously she sits on the city council. Um, but I, I, um, had a fair amount of contact while, um, she was advocating for, um, our, well, um, her, her constituents, but also, um, the resolution that this board passed regarding, um, taxpayer transparency. That process, she, um, she proved herself to have a, a, a good understanding of what was at stake in that. You know, and also just being on the city council, I think is a good preparation, as our colleague, uh, Lynn Gerlach could tell you, for, um, being able to handle board work generally, um, and understanding things like Robert's rules. I feel like she could transition into the role quite easily. And since some of her, her community work, um, for instance, the community fridge, this is something she's been involved in, in for years. It's just, just basically stocking refrigerators throughout this, um, across the city um, with food. Anyone can go and get it. And, um, as a, as a person who cares about their community, I, that, I find that just really appealing. They're going to be expanding that, um, program. And then, um, on an even bigger scale, she is very involved in, um, the ne, um, the city neighborhood association and has been for quite some time. She's, I think currently their, um, I think their secretary. So I, I have crossed paths with her and, uh, um, in many different ways across our community and at various, functions and in various rooms with, with, um, a lot of people trying to move this city forward. And so this feels to me like, um, she would be a good fit for our board for the next nine months and, um, I think she's shown a lot of leadership already in her young life. So thank you.
All right. So Laura, I'm going to stick with you because now we're going to go around the other way. And so if you have a second person that you would want to advocate for, uh, you may.
Um, I, I will briefly, um, I, I, but it's always someone who's been advocated for.
But.
Okay. So Reverend Matt Seagert, I saw him speak, um, uh, to a very large group of people at a rally recently. I had never met him. I still haven't met him actually. Um, but I saw him speak and, um, talk about things like being a good neighbor and, and, um, being involved in your community and caring about, um, the least among us. And, um, he spoke in terms that really like spoke to me. Um, and I'm just really curious to know more about him. So I'd like to, um, make sure that he gets an interview. Um, again, I don't really know him, but I, that, that speech was quite powerful and the crowd, there was a large crowd reacted, um, in an incredibly favorable way.
Thank you. Andrew?
Yes, I'm trying to, trying to get back to the letters and I. Yeah, I can't find my, my shared.
It's a shared folder?
Yeah, it's a, it's a shared, right. It's a shared folder. Uh, or was it, oh, um. I think I just did the, um. Oh, come on. It's shared with me. It should be like the primary thing and shared with me, right? Oh, oh yeah. Okay. Cause I go, cause, yeah, and it was like, there was, it was about the last modified date. Um. I got it. I got it.
Who has it?
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to put in for, I'm going to advocate for, uh, for Rico. And the reason, the reason I'm doing that is because although, although I do, I do think, um, I do think it would have been much, it's, it's obviously important for people to, ideal for people to share about themselves and their materials instead of do a very brief letter. I think maybe people read a, a posting like this and have different ideas about, right? Whether you can advocate to add more later, or if you're just putting in initial interest. So what, what I do, what I do like about, um, Rico is he is the, um, he is the office manager of, of Wellspring and is, um, which is a part of, uh, St. John's Ministries. And I think that, um, you know, working, you know, working with, uh, say, uh, vulnerable populations is very important. And although he didn't really provide details in his letter, I, I think he is someone who I'm, I'm confident would not be a waste of our time to interview. I think he would have a lot to say and he has a perspective. I believe from, um, from what I'm able to find about him, that is, um, probably unique compared to others that are up here.
Thank you. Lynn?
Um, I would, I noticed that, um, Samantha Meister has received, um, probably more votes than anyone already. But I just want to make sure that in, as the rounds, as we go forward, we don't forget that this, I, I absolutely think she should be, um, very seriously considered. She is an associate professor in the professional program in education at UW Green Bay. And so she is one of the people who prepares our teachers for teaching. Um, she has a fantastic background. Starting with a bachelor's degree in education, a master's degree in reading and literacy, um, reading light specialist licensure, PhD in curriculum and instruction. Um, she's been a middle school teacher. She's worked in higher education. I just think that, um, I'm thrilled to see that she has so much support already. And let's not forget, she could be a wonderful addition to our board.
Thank you. Jeanette?
I would like to also advocate for Alyssa Prophet. Um, I know her personally through neighborhood association and, um, other, uh, other groups that we belong to. Um, she's a person who has a lot of things on her plate, absolutely. But she is great. She's a great juggler. Um, she, she knows how to do things and she truly, truly cares. I know her to be a good listener and she has kids in the school, young kids in the school. So even though she does have a lot of things on her plate, I think she would be a good, um, addition to this board because she would bring a perspective, a broad perspective. She also was in our academy. She also was in our academy, um, and learned about the schools and the school board. So that's a plus about her as well. I'm sorry, ambassador in academy, yes. And, um, that also, um, is a plus in her category.
Alex?
I would like to advocate for Miranda Shornak. Um, what I really like about Miranda is she in a lot of ways fills it in an important, um, an important area that is continuing to evolve and increase, uh, an importance in our schools and in our community, which is that technical education part, that post secondary schooling that isn't a four-year college and taking what is really the majority of the types of students that we have in our district and, and really being that link and at, at NWTC. So her ability to have that working relationship with our district, with NWTC, uh, presumably with, um, School of Innovation and so on and so forth. I think that is invaluable. And the opportunity and the likelihood for growth for our student body, um, going forward is only, is only going to increase. And having her, um, bring that aspect and that perspective, I think is really crucial to something that none of us really currently provide. Um, or any of the other people who have an education background. I think it's a very specific thing. And the other thing too, her ability to, uh, and her, some of her experiences she touched on, you know, with diversity, things related to, um, working with diverse, um, uh, partners, internal and external, in addition to another person that could communicate with our largest minority population such as Spanish speakers. Um, I, I just think those are some key things to point out on her behalf.
Thanks. Do you have a third or are you good? Lynn?
I'm going to just second two motions if I may. I want to say everything that, uh, Alex said about Miranda Shornak, I would have said. And everything that Andrew said about Aaron Lee, I would have said. Great.
Great. Do you have a third, Andrew?
I mean, we, we can't, just to make sure and if people want to go back, you can advocate for someone twice.
Sure.
Okay. Did, did either of you not for that reason? I just want to make sure of being fair.
I thought about it, but I'd feel like we should be okay without any additional advocacy for.
Sure.
Oh, I'll do a very brief, I'll do a very brief advocacy again for, um, for Aaron Lee. I think, um, I think the, I think the new, I mean, I'm not the youngest one on the board and anymore, but like, um, Alex shouldn't be either. I, ideally, I think having, uh, someone more, more recently, especially if it was someone more recently who was, um, with us for, for GBAPS and found a path there.
Thank you. Laura?
Um, my third choice would be Samantha Meister, our Meister. Um, I was very, um, just, I don't know her at all, but I did very much like, um, you know, a lot of aspects of her, of her letter and, um, she would bring a lot to the table and, um, and I, I, I like the way she is honest about, um, the present climate surrounding school or public education. And I think that's important. It's going to be very important in this coming year. Um, so, um, yeah, that's pretty much all I have to say. I'd, I'd like to hear more from her.
All right. Thank you. So that's it. So now let's just have a brief conversation. In the materials, I said, we round down if we're, um, we're odd. Um, but I'm willing to be flexible, right? If everyone wants five votes versus four votes, great. We have nine people that we're going to carry forward. Anyone have a, a strong preference? Laura?
We, we might get to a conclusion a little faster with fewer votes.
That, that's the theory, but I'm, I'm flexible.
It, hemming, um, hemming five instead of four though gives us a, I, I could, I think it's very difficult to, it could be very difficult to give weight if, if you only have four. I, I think there, it's hard to even give two dots if you only have four and express the strength of preference. I think five is, five is reasonable for nine. I think we, I think it would drag the process out too much. We had nine for nine, but we, no, I think five is, I think five is reasonable. I think four is a little tight.
Lynn?
I'll go either way.
I think five is a better number than four.
Alex?
I would agree because I didn't think about what Andrew just said. If you want to give weight with five, now you can give weight to two people and still have an option to put a third in. And I think that's maybe a little bit better in my opinion.
All right. It's adopted. Um, unless we want to vote on that adoption and amend the process. Great. I appreciate you for one. So, um, let's go and go to the next. Have, have the names been put in the next grid? Yeah. Do that real quickly and then we will start. So everyone already has five, um, dots. So that works out on the next page. All right. Thank you. Is everyone set? Thirty more seconds. Everyone else? Jeanette, you good? Lynn? Andrew? Laura? Okay. So Kenzie, you can show it? The weirdest thing. Okay. Yeah. Just leave it there. All right. So this brings us down to seven, which is within the, the frame that we had kind of set at the beginning. So I would entertain a motion to adopt the seven vote getter, individuals that receive votes as our interview panel.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt these seven people as our interview panel. Second.
Discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
You should probably, this is.
Thank you. That, this is important enough. Yeah. Uh, let's do a roll call. We'll vote for this. Kenzie?
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
Gerlach?
Aye.
Nell?
Aye.
Minno?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody. So we only have one more, um, point of business this evening. I'm going to go back to the agenda. Um, we have, um, a s- set of, do we have a document that has just those categories on it that we can share? Okay. I, I did. Um, so I'm just going to read so that we can all understand. So I'm going to get there before I start talking. One second, please. Correct. Yes. No, I, I have it. I'm just getting, I'm just getting to it. Okay. So because we have emerging tools that will, um, be at individuals disposals, uh, um, the, the concept here is not to share individual questions with, um, the, the interviewees, but some categories of questions so that they can, you know, understand that the nature of the questions that we will ask. So I presented five categories and I think we've got them up there now. Um, category number one, governance and roles. Uh, category number two, personal qualifications. Priorities and challenges for number three, community engagement for number four, and budget and financial stewardship, um, for the fifth category. So just wanted to have a quick conversion and vote to adopt, uh, these, um, categories. Um, that would be included in the email that is sent to the, um, and the candidates that will be, um, invited to interview so that they are prepared. So is there any discussion or questions or suggestions for change? Andrew?
Yeah, I just have one thing. And the, the reason I didn't, I, I didn't bring it into the process earlier is because I think it is a technical question, not a, not a fundamental thing. I'm, I am sensitive to the fact that we've had, uh, concerns about residency before. And is, is there a way that we can ask, um, ask or ta- or even tell someone to bring to the interview? Just a, I'm not saying documentation. I'm saying a, a clear statement of why, because we learned some things in this process that there's a, a legal concept of primary residency that isn't completely defined. And if maybe does everyone, whether it's a question here or not, could just bring a statement saying, yep, yep, I, I live here. It does, of course, it doesn't matter if you own or rent, but just, I live here and I've lived here and, um, this is my, you know, I think that would be a good, I don't know, like, time has to be spent here if, if people, but I think we should at least encourage people to, to answer that. Um, like, you know, and I, like I said, when I, when I advocated for, for Aaron, I did double check to make sure there were no question marks because at, at one time I believed that a college student registered to vote in Green Bay, which was the case when he ran. I was pretty sure that that counted. Now I'm only a little bit sure that that.
Right. So, um, other questions, discussion? Laura?
I feel like this might be a question to run through legal, like this, there's no issue with us requiring this, is there? Um, I, I just, I, there's something about this that is like a red flag, but I don't know why. So.
So I would say contrary to what was insinuated or reported in the media, that this was your obligation to ferret out residency requirements of your co-board members. It is not your legal obligation. And I would also say that residency for purposes of whether an individual is eligible to run for school board is a legal concept of which you're not trained to evaluate, saying that with all due respect. You certainly can ask somebody, um, whether they are resident and they could say yes or no, but that has no legal significance other than to draw attention to it and to say, they said that. The real legal significance is that attestation that a candidate signs when they file their candidate's paperwork. So yes, you can ask it, but it has no legal significance. And again, I think it is, um, really playing into what the pundits have said was your legal responsibility, which is not.
Lynn?
I'll be brief.
Oh, sure.
Um, I just want to be clear that Wisconsin state statute, chapter eight, nominations primaries and elections, specifically eight point twenty-eight, challenge to residency qualifications, says that any individual who believes that an individual holding or elected to state or local office is not a resident or inhabitant of this state or of the jurisdiction or district in which he or she serves, whenever such qualification is required by the constitution of this state or by any applicable law, may file a verified complaint with the attorney general. It goes on to say that the attorney general may thereupon investigate whether such allegations are true. It is the job of the attorney general to investigate these things. And if someone has a concern and, and any evidence that somebody is not meeting residency requirements, they are instructed by state statute to take them to the attorney general, not to the school board or the superintendent.
Jeanette, did you have a comment?
I have more of a question. So if somebody is going to be elected, they sign a statement of, um, their candidacy, their statement of candidacy. And it states that this is where I live and you check a box at the bottom that says that you're being honest and true. And, but they're not being elected in this situation.
Correct. They're not being elected, but they applied and the statutory requirements in order to be eligible to be considered include that you are a residency. And then they take the oath of office. So it, it is, there is no forms filed, but it is the same legal construct.
Alex?
I appreciate Andrew's thought and I would be willing to also entertain that. I don't think it's, um, a completely terrible idea. It would probably depend on how we discussed it, how we, what we asked for, how we did that and maybe what it looked like, um, to some extent.
I have a question, Melissa. So recognizing that the, the penalty of law is established by that being a federal form and that's the act there, well, well, is, I, I, the question is, we can't replicate that attestation, right? So again, to your point, there's no legal significance to them saying, yes, I live here, um, out there. So, uh, I, my opinion on the, um, on this is that, you know, we are all individuals. Um, and we all have, you know, the, um, the means, um, and to, to do whatever research or whatever, um, um, we wanted to make sure that there would, this, this, this individual. So acting as an individual, we have means. Um, as a board and as an interview panel, um, I don't know the value, um, of it. So by, you know, by adding their address to the letter of intent and, and everything, um, I, I think that that is, um, i- is duplicative at this point. Uh, Laura?
I'm gonna chime in. We've all just had a lesson in what, what an allegation is, as opposed to what proof is. An allegation is not the same thing as proof, so I don't mind asking the question. But like you said, this has no legal standing whatsoever, so. But we can ask it, and, and, um, but it, it, it's not the same, it's not proof, it's not proof that holds up in court, and that's the kind of proof that is necessary, so, anyway.
Andrew.
Right, but the, my point is that specifically is because this is an appointment, I'm not suggesting we look at the, um. I, I don't think we have a mechanism currently to look at elections differently, but there is. Wha- what it would do by asking the question, uh, unlikely though it is, if, if someone said, oh, you know what, actually, um. I. You know, I'm, I'm a snowbird and I'm here, I'm here half the time, I'm somewhere else half the time, but I'll make the meetings remotely. That would call into question this primary residence issue that's not very well developed, and. For, I mean, for me, if someone is a part-time, is a. Part-time resident of the district, I would have to give that a lot more serious thought, that may not apply to any of these people, it, it probably doesn't, but. I think given, I think given what we experienced, I think it shows, I think it shows respect to, uh. To people concerned about the issue of, of residency, to, to ask a question, please, please state your residence and confirm this is your primary residence.
Yeah, Andrew, actually, I was gonna recommend the same thing, uh, let's just work a language for a preamble. Where the introduction, just as if you were coming to speak at a public forum, they say their name. And we establish the language for that to say, and your primary residence, um.
Primary.
Yeah, primary, right, so let's, let's establish a little bit of language, but make it part of the introduction, um, before we get started with the interview, is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we've already asked them for their address in their, in their application, but. I would agree to do it as a preamble, I would not agree to do it as part of the interview process, because I don't wanna set precedent. That now all of a sudden, well, the board is asking every new member regardless. So we, we don't wanna set any kind of precedent, and I'm not a lawyer, but I've watched a lot of TV, so, no, I'm just being silly. Um, no, I think doing it as a preamble is good, thank you for that thought.
So, and Alex?
Just very quickly, I think that's a great solution, and I think having people verbalize it like that solves, uh, what I think we're going for, in particular, I think. Andrew's main point that I just wanna finish on is, I think the general public does have a general interest in this right now, in this particular case, and I'm not worried. Um, about anything else other than making sure that, you know, we're doing our best to garner their trust and, and try not to, you know. Try to avoid any situation that we've already maybe, you know, had to deal with, so.
Yeah, I, I appreciate it, so can we call the question and just see if there are any other discussions about the categories of questions? If not, can we, I'll, I'll entertain a motion just to accept them and, and communicate them to interviewees?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, with that, there is no more business on the agenda, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero. Four four eight two zero two five, or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.